Okay. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on a bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty P. M. via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID- nineteen virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Town website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Roll call.
Gaston Halpert.
Here.
Jorge Mastro Pietro.
Here.
Mark Matzel.
Here.
Maggie Miggins.
Here.
Craig Platner.
Here.
Sujatha Sean.
Here.
Shree Vijay.
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel Bear.
Here.
Chairman Beth Saul.
Here. Great, thanks. Moving on to our first item, approval of minutes. Let's begin with the minutes of December first, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm just gonna pull them open. I'll read the names of those attendees. I know we have some changes in the board. So, members who are here that could vote include Dan Bear, Gaston, Mark Matzel, Maggie, Shreeney, and myself. So, of those who I named, anybody, well, did anybody, first of all, have any questions, comments, or corrections to the minutes? And I'm happy, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of December first. Anybody second?
I second.
Thanks. That was, Shreeney, was that you second?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. All in favor?
I approve.
It's allowed.
Yep, I think all in favor, approved. Can you have it again? Just a hand up if we see. Okay. Any opposed? Not seeing, and abstentions, obviously, from all those who were not here for that.
Sorry.
Hi Diane. Okay, for the record, that's okay, seven thirty-six. Thank you for, you're joining us. And we are just in approving minutes from last year. So, you're just in listen-only mode for now anyhow. No problem. The second set of minutes that we're going to look at is December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And members who are in attendance include Dan Bear, Gaston Halpert, Jorge Mastro Pietro, Maggie Miggins, Shreeney, and myself. Did anybody have any comments or corrections to the minutes of December? Which mostly included the, it was the documentation of the resolution, which we had reviewed before approving. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Thanks Gaston. All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? No, and all those who either were not here or were not on the board, whatever. Minutes of December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one are approved. Thank you. As we have no applications on the docket for this evening, we will move from there to our business, our board discussion. As alluded to, both in the past and at last meeting, as we discussed, we have two different professionals who serve our board. So, we have, I've coordinated with them over the past two weeks to think through what would be most helpful. And in our discussion, we reached out to a few different members of the board who had raised some concerns in the past. And we also took into account conversations that either have been brought to our attention or that we thought of. So, I just wanna introduce this as this is intended to, in some ways, be a primer, in some ways, to bring up some issues that we kind of deal with as the Milburn Township Planning Board, not just, you know, a planning board in New Jersey, though it's useful to have that as the, as a basis, you know, what are we? But also some of the types of issues that we as our own community deal with. I think it's important to, for us to be mindful of how we deal with the types of issues that come before us. And this is intended to also help raise some questions. And we, you may ask some questions or bring up some topics that we aren't prepared to fully discuss, or we don't have enough information. But we wanna say, okay, this is great. This is another topic. And maybe we, you know, bookmark it in two months or three months from now, if we have another light agenda where we kind of do another educational session. I think because we haven't been able to be together now for multiple years, there's just some information and conversations that don't get to happen. So, this is an opportunity for us to kind of get to hear the things that are on each other's mind. No question is too silly, or, you know, petty, or dumb to ask. So, with that, I thank you for your attention. And I think I'm gonna hand it over to Graham to kick it off.
Sure. Thank you, Beth. And just, good evening, everybody. My name is Graham Pedo. I know I haven't met most of you. Given, you know, we just started with the board, and I've only met you all in a virtual format. But my name is Graham Pedo. I'm the Senior Land Use Planner with Topology. We're thrilled to be serving as the township planner here in Milburn. Just a little bit of my personal background, just so you know where I kind of came from. I started my planning career with the State Department of Planning in Maryland. I was there for about seven years, then came up here to New Jersey, back home to New Jersey. I'm originally from New Jersey. Worked at Rutgers for his Transportation Center for a period of time. And then for the past six and a half years, I was the Assistant Planner in Montclair Township, and I staffed the zoning board there, and served as the Secretary and the Professional Planner for the board. So, happy to be here. Do, I have, you know, worked with boards like this, and worked with boards, and given actually a very similar presentation to this, to the Montclair Boards. You know, it's important to just remember the very, very important role of the planning board, and how it is a huge responsibility for the township to steward the future of things in this community. I wanna thank Ed for his help in getting tonight's presentation kind of put together. We're gonna tag team a little bit. So, I'll let Ed introduce himself, and then we'll kind of move into the first component of the presentation that we have this evening. I'm gonna share my screen. We put together some slides so that you don't just have to look at us talking. And you can kind of look at something besides all of us this evening. So, just kind of a brief overview of where we're gonna go. We're gonna do a little bit of a primer on the municipal land use law, which Ed will kind of help with, and a little bit of the components of application review. Then we'll move into kind of the development regulations and zoning ordinance here in the township, where things live within your code. And then a few board member recommendations, keys to being a good board member. We'll kind of talk through some strategies and tips to make sure that, you know, you're basing your decisions correctly, interacting with the public appropriately, and serving as good stewards of the planning board here in Milburn. So, Ed, I'm gonna kick it over to you for a little intro, and then we can get started on the municipal land use law primer. That sounds good?
That's great. Thank you, Graham. Good evening, everyone. I've had the opportunity to represent the board for several years. So, most of you know my background. I don't, I won't spend time tonight going through that. While Graham had four items listed, don't think that we're gonna be done by eight o'clock this evening. It's, we have a full agenda. What I'm going to discuss are general planning board functions, and that I think will be helpful for some of the new members. And, and as the Chair said, a primer reminder for seasoned board members. And then, secondly, just briefly go through a couple of aspects of what we do, and a few other things related to emails and, and public sessions. So, let me, let me begin with the general planning board functions. A municipal planning board, and this board, has essentially two functions. It has a planning function, and it has a development approval function. So, those are the two main components of what the planning board does. In its planning functions, there are four basic areas in which the planning board participates. Probably the most important one is the first, and that is the development of the master plan. Planning boards are not required to have a master plan, but they may prepare. And after a public hearing, adopt, then the master plan. The purpose of the master plan is to guide the use of land within the municipality in a manner which protects the public health, safety, and welfare, and promotes the general welfare. There are two components that a master plan has to have. First, every master plan has to have a statement of objectives, principles, assumptions, policies, and standards upon which the constituent proposals for physical, economic, and social development are based. So, you need that statement of objectives. And the second component that you need in a master plan is the land use plan element, which takes into account and states the relationship to the objectives, principles, assumptions, policies, and standards that we just talked about, and takes into account various other elements of the master plan that we're gonna talk about below. The land use plan should reflect natural conditions, topography, soil conditions, water supply, drainage, sewer, other utilities, and so forth. And should show the existing and proposed location extent and intensity of development for various purposes. In addition to these two mandatory components, there are fifteen other identified elements that could be contained in a master plan. And I'm not going to go through all fifteen. But they would include things like a housing plan element, and that's something that we do have in Milburn, and we will be seeing shortly as we move forward with our affordable housing aspect. A circulation plan element, a utility service plan element, a recreation plan element, conservation plan element, historic preservation plan element, recycling plan element, educational facilities plan element, and green buildings and environmental sustainability plan element. In addition, there needs to be in the master plan a specific policy statement related to the relationship between the proposed development here in Milburn and proposed development and master plans in contiguous municipalities. So, there's some relationship and some consistency between the two. In addition to that, the master plan should take into account the master plan, the county master plan, state development and redevelopment plan, district solid waste plan, and so forth. That is the main planning function of the planning board. There are three other aspects of planning that the, that the board does. The second one is the official map. And really, the official map is one that the governing body may adopt by ordinance. And that is referred to the planning board. The official map is deemed conclusive with respect to the location width of streets, drainage ways, location of flood control basins in public areas, whether or not streets, ways, basins, or areas are improved or unimproved, or are in actual physical existence. The official map is important because if there is something designated on the official map, such as a new road or other public improvements, that area can in fact be reserved in an application that comes in that infringes upon that particular area. The third planning function is one that we've, we've engaged in recently, and have engaged in probably every year that I've been on the board, and that is the review of land development ordinances. Before a governing body can adopt the development regulations or revision or amendment to it, including zoning ordinances or other development regulations, the planning board is required, the governing body is required to transmit that to the planning board, and the planning board has thirty-five days within which to review that development regulation and make a determination as to whether it is inconsistent with the master plan. If it is inconsistent with the master plan, it should set forth what the governing body can do to try to make it consistent, or, or make the ordinance better, more consistent with the master plan. And the planning board can also make recommendations to the governing body with regard to that ordinance. And we've done that. I know the new members have not had the opportunity to do that. But we have experienced all of that, and have taken advantage of the, the powers that the land use law gives us when we review ordinances that the governing body has proposed. Sometimes we develop ordinances and send them over to the governing body for consideration for introduction based upon things that we've seen. It doesn't happen as often, but it certainly can happen. And even if we are the ones that initiate consideration of the ordinance, it still has to get referred back to us, even though you would hope that we would not do anything that's inconsistent with the master plan, or that, you know, we put together an ordinance that we don't expect to make more recommendations on. The last planning aspect that the planning board engages in is a capital improvement program and project review. And again, this is not one that is initiated by the planning board, but instead, the governing body has to authorize the planning board to prepare this type of program of municipal capital improvement projects. If they do that, it's over a term of six years. And that then becomes important in terms of where the governing body goes with regard to public improvements that, that will occur. So, that wraps up the four planning functions, main planning functions of the planning board. The second.
Ed, could I jump in with a question? Or, I have actually sort of two questions slash summary items, or just a, it was a moment for me. The first is that, I just wanna make sure, did, did you start by saying a master plan is not required, or is required?
No, actually, the statute says a planning board may adopt a master plan. Now, I don't know of any, of any planning board, certainly that I've represented, that has not adopted a master plan.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's any municipality in the state of New Jersey that does not have a master plan, because if you don't have a master plan, you're unable to adopt the zoning ordinance.
Right. Yeah, okay.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what the law is. I'm not, but you're, it's, it's a good point. And.
No, that's fine. And then I also wanted to highlight, and maybe I don't wanna jump the gun, but we, as the planning board, are also required to maintain that, which means revisiting it or reviewing it with every, is that every ten years?
Excellent. Yes, thank you. Yes. The statute, the municipal land use law requires that the mass, if you have a master plan, that master plan has to be reexamined every, at least every ten years. Now, you can reexamine the master plan as often as you like. It does not have, you don't have to wait ten years to do it. But a reexamination of the master plan is different from either, A, an amendment to the master plan, or B, adopting a new master plan. A reexamination report has specific components that ought to be included in the reexamination report, but it is what it says. That is, it is a report. So, if you look at, the report says the master plan should be revised to do this, that, or the other thing. The adoption of that reexamination report does not constitute amendment to the master plan. You then have to implement your own recommendation by initiating an amendment process. And, and sometimes that's where things fall down, where the reexamination report makes serious recommendations as to where, where we should go, and then no one ever proceeds to amend the master plan. And you, and you have a reexamination report that has not been implemented. So, that, again, Chair, two, two good points.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. And just for everybody's benefit, so our, our master plan, and I believe all of our reexamination reports, the most recent of which was two thousand and eighteen, are all available on the website. And then, I mean, I don't know if you still, I'm not actually sure. Do you print those out and give them to new members? Like, the, the, I know you give our ordinances, right, in the green booklet? But I don't think we, we hand out, but it's all available.
I don't give them out because it's, it's just easier.
A lot of paper.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, they're all there. And, you know, sometimes you'll hear it referenced, especially sometimes when professionals come before our board, and they're providing planning testimony. They'll reference in your master plan reexamination, these are your objectives, you know, that you revisited. So, that's their, when they're coming, they're speaking to us about, you know, what we say and what our objectives for the town are. And then the last item, I just wanted to sort of note, and like almost bold underline of what Ed said was, yes, we have the, you know, responsibility to review ordinances that come before us, which is what I'd mentioned, has happened a couple of different times. We receive a draft ordinance that the TC members have, have read, and then, you know, given to us to, to respond to. But Ed also noted that we do, as a planning board, have the power, should we feel that there's something that is within our purview, that we think an ordinance should be written. I guess we have the power to make a recommendation and draft an ordinance, which doesn't go as it is. We then would give it to our TC, and they would review it and decide if they agree with us. Oh, thank you, Graham, for bringing that up. So, I just, I think that's just something to note. I, and I agree with that. I don't recall too often us doing that as a planning board. I seem to remember the as-built survey ordinance that came sort of through the Environmental Commission to the planning board, and then to TC. There was some coordination on that ordinance, which is going back about four years. So, I don't, I don't think we make a habit too often of having the planning board come up with a revised ordinance, but that's not to say that it couldn't happen, or happen in, in cooperation with the TC. So, I think that's just helpful to note.
Chair, I don't know if you wanna take questions on this aspect, or do you want us to finish?
I think so. I think, I, I would like to kind of have it more engaged dialogue. If we, if we feel like we're getting too far off, I guess, Graham, if I can assign you to sort of be a, a pace keeper, and if you feel like we, we're not gonna hit anything. But I would love us to sort of engage in a little dialogue if we can.
No, absolutely. I think an interactive approach is, is better. Will keep us all engaged. So, happy.
So, I don't, Mark, I think I saw your hand next.
Yeah, thank you. Are you Madam Chair, or are you Madam Chair sitting in, or?
I, while I am the chair, I think I can just be best tonight.
Okay. I, I had, you know, when you would ask for a couple of recommendations, one of the things I was hoping that we would address would be, within the, the Master Plan two thousand and eighteen revision, there was a matrix plan of recommendations, and a lot of really great recommendations that came from both our board and the, the public at large, the community. And I totally marked it up like crazy. And I know during some of the meetings I reference, you know, that, that would be the matrix would be the short-term, medium-term, ongoing, and long-term recommendations. And it would be good to address, you know, given the fact that we've been eviscerated on the flood circuit, there were a lot of things that we could be doing that we're not doing, that are recommendations with, within a short and medium timeframe to, you know, to basically enhance green infrastructure, reduce flooding, look at the, the raw way and riparian master plans, you know, to reduce flooding, things like that are particularly relevant. And I think it would be really good to, you know, not make this a one-off, but somehow, you know, either establish a subcommittee that would look at this a few times a year. I'd be happy to, to sit on it, if you, if you all think it's a good idea. But it gives us sort of a framework to look at the framework, to see what we're not doing, what we are doing, and things that I might be, or we might be totally unaware that somebody's doing. But as far as I can tell, they haven't been addressed. I mean, things like, well, it's.
Well, Mark, yeah, before you go too far, I wanna say, first of all, thank you. And you brought up something that Graham and I had talked about. Graham, maybe I, I'll turn to you, because, Mark, you mentioned the word subcommittee. Graham, if you can give us a little bit of context, talk about where it's been successful, like you had told me. And then, and then I think what we should do is, go ahead and do just that. But go ahead, Graham, if you can contextualize.
Yeah, I can. And I'm happy to give kind of a two-part answer on this. You know, as, as we're kind of coming on board as the township planner for the, for the year two thousand and twenty-two, part of our work program is to look through the master plan reexamine, identify and evaluate, particularly those short and medium-term, you know, recommendations, and see how we can advance those here within the township through, you know, master plan amendments, ordinance amendments, and all, and all those things. And just kind of then, the second prompt to this response is, you know, kind of building on what Beth just alluded to, you know, other planning boards do maintain subcommittees. And I think that a subcommittee format would be very beneficial to the planning board here, particularly for some of these, you know, larger discussion matters that probably can't take up an entire meeting here amongst all these folks, but a smaller subcommittee could meet, discuss, and then present some more formal recommendations or paths of action to the full board at large to move forward and to address some of those short and medium-term recommendations within the master plan reexam. So, I do think that that is a beneficial approach. It's something that the board should consider, is, you know, setting up some subcommittees to work through those, those items.
Great, thanks. So, Mark, if you're okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the note, and we'll make the notes. And then, either, either we'll do it at the end, or we'll kind of follow up with tonight's meeting, you know, in our minutes, and then move to create a subcommittee on that, if that's okay, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And, and there are some things that I had noted, for instance, that were medium priorities. But given the fact that some infrastructure bills have passed, and others will pass, and the fact that we do not have a non-motorized transit plan, I think is outrageous. I mean, I don't know a municipality with half a brain that doesn't have one of those now. And especially given the fact that there are billions of dollars out there that will become available to cities and municipalities, townships. It moves us to make that a priority. And that's good for a lot of different things, including green infrastructure, bike plans, the whole thing. But anyway, it's.
No, I think that's great. And I think you're right, in the format, just like Graham said, you know, you guys spend the time, I think a subcommittee looks at it, makes some recommendations, and distills the information, and presents it, then the board can reflect. I, I think that's a great format to us, to actually move to acting on these, instead of you feeling like you keep bringing them up in sort of in a vacuum, you know? So, I'd like to, to see us perceive it that. Thanks.
Can I ask a quick question on that? When, so we, we would form a subcommittee, and when it comes time for the meeting, when we actually bring about the ideas, do, like, how, how does it, so I feel like now, when we have three people or four people that have a certain opinion, it's a much greater feeling than just one person reporting for a subcommittee. How does that work when it actually comes to the meeting? The, like, does, just you say, okay, we have a subcommittee of four, and this is what they say, and then it doesn't really get, I don't know, broadcast? Like, what, what, what does that, or how does that played out in the past, Graham?
So, typically, in other boards that I've seen this implemented, is that, you know, there is a section added to the agenda called Committee Reports. And the, you know, kind of lead from the committee, or, you know, the committee, committee designates one person to report out on behalf of the committee's discussion. Typically, you know, there could be a quick memo, or some kind of memorandum that's drafted, or report that's distributed to the board as part of their packet, or part of their communication, so that all board members can kind of read it in advance, and kind of have a sense of what the recommendation is from the committee. And then the report out is really just a reading into the public record of what the committee discussed, what the recommendation is. And, you know, then the, the full board can take collective action to, you know, advance the recommendation through the appropriate channel. So, that's typically how that's done. So, that way, it allows kind of the hashing out to happen among the three members of the subcommittee to kind of, you know, to discuss and come up with those, those approaches and ideas, and then bring forward that full recommendation to the full board at large. Hope that.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Diane, go ahead.
Okay, my internet keeps going in and out, so I hope I can get this in. I'm very interested in what you said, Ed, about capital improvements authorized by the TC in terms of six years for public improvements. This is something I've been talking about for years, and I've been talking to my committee members and Alex about this. Municipal buildings. Would that be under what you're talking about, Ed? You know, public improvements, if we wanted to have a plan to improve our municipal buildings, would that start at the planning board to do a deep dive into that? Would that start with our CFO? Like, how does that fit into what you're talking about?
Well, the way, the way it fits in is that the governing body has to authorize us to prepare such a program. So, while we are the ones that would prepare the program, we need the authorization from the governing body. That's different from, for example, the master plan, which, while it's discretionary, and.
Internet's going up.
We initiate that. So, that decision as to whether to adopt the master plan or not is a planning board function. We, we initiate it. A capital improvement program and, and project program is one that the township committee has to, in Milburn's case, the township committee has to authorize us to do it, and then we, we go ahead and do. We don't have the, the power under the land use law to, as we say in the law, suispante, to, to by ourselves just initiate a capital improvement program. We need that authorization from the, from the governing body. And, and same thing with regard to. From the governing body. And, and, uh, same thing with regard to an official map. Those are the two, two aspects. There, the official map is not adopted by us. The official map is adopted by the governing body. But, uh, that official map is to be sent to us similar to an ordinance. Whereby we would look at it and, and comment on it, um, and, and make any recommendations to the governing body on it. So those are the two. The official map and the capital improvement plan are two things that we cannot initiate on our own. That has to be initiated from the township committee.
Um, Ed, I got, Diane called me. She was having internet issues, but, um, I, I'm trying to distill it and I will just send her a message, but she can also watch this back.
Okay. Could you give me like a 10-second recap now that before I lose my internet again, Ed? So we have to, you.
The, the.
The TC.
The capital improvement program can only be done if we are directed by the governing body, the township committee, to undertake that. We cannot initiate it on our own.
But it would be the planning board that would initiate or that could look into what we could do, so to speak.
We wouldn't look into it if we were authorized by the governing body.
Okay.
As a planning board, just say, okay, hey, it's a great idea. Let's do a capital improvement program.
Okay.
We don't have the power to do that.
Municipal buildings would be a capital improvement for our township.
Yes, any, any public improvement.
Public improvement. Okay, thank you. Sorry about my internet.
We've all been there. Okay. Okay.
Are there any other questions before we move forward? Okay.
Okay, um, the development approval, uh, portion of the, the other prong of the planning board's function. Is one that we engage in, uh, most of the time. And that is typically initiated through an application. That is made by a private, uh, entity or individual to develop property within the municipality. It's, uh, either a subdivision application or a site plan application. Those are the two applications. Subdivision is what it sounds like. It's a division of land. Into two or more lots. A site plan, uh, is not a, a site plan is only done. For a non-residential project. There, you don't, I'm sorry, for a non. A non-residential project or a multi-family residential project. A single-family home. Or a two-family home does not have to submit an application for site plan approval to the planning board. And in fact, we and the governing body cannot require that. The law is very clear. But anything beyond that, uh, if it's multi-family beyond two, uh. Two dwellings, that comes before us as a site plan and subdivisions or any division of land. We also have what's known as ancillary jurisdiction. And this is as a result of the 1976 land use law that I'm talking about now. Ancillary jurisdiction allows the planning board to grant variances. And they're typically known as C variances or bulk variances. Things like side yards and setbacks. Height, so long as it doesn't exceed a certain, a certain percent or a certain, uh, uh, certain number. Uh, and other, uh, typical bulk variances. That was done because prior to the 1976 municipal land use law. Applicants had to go to two different boards. They had to go to the planning board, for example, for site plan approval. And then they had to go to the board of adjustment to get variance approval for bulk variance for a side yard setback or a rear yard setback or so forth. This ancillary jurisdiction, uh, made the process more efficient. However. Uh, we do not have the power. Under this ancillary jurisdiction to grant what's known as a D variance. It's sometimes called a use variance, and that is one aspect of a D variance. And that's the one that everyone. Is most familiar with. When someone wants to use property in a manner that is not permitted. Under the zoning ordinance, they need to obtain a use variance to allow them to do that. There's also a si- five other, uh, again, D, the letter D, lowercase d, variances. Which are in, in the same kind of category. That is, and they include things and Graham's got them up on the, on the, uh, screen here. An expansion of a non-conforming use. Uh, so you know, you have a non-conforming use. You want to expand it. That's. For all intents and purposes, a use variance, although it's a D2 variance as opposed to a D1. And then quickly going through the rest of them, a deviation from the standards of a conditional use. Now, a conditional use is. A, a new term put in the 1976 municipal land use law. And, and a conditional use is sometimes described as a permitted use, provided that the conditions. That are set forth in the ordinance are fully satisfied. So you see that on things like, um, service, service stations is, is a typical conditional use. Where you have, you allow service stations in certain zones, but then you put a series of conditions. It has to be. There, there can't be more than, uh, one service station within 500 feet of another service station. It has to have this kind of access. It has to have this kind of setbacks. It has to be, you know, uh, cannot be contiguous to a residential, uh, property. Things like that. Those are conditions that are actually set forth in numerical order in the ordinance. Now, if an applicant wants to put a service station in, in the hypothetical example I just gave. And they're next to, for example, uh, a residential zone, so they can't satisfy that condition. Then they have to go to the board of adjustment. Because again, if you think about it, it's a type of use variance. Because where the township is allowing the use of that. Piece of property for a service station, if you can meet these conditions. And if you can't, then you need the equivalent of a use variance. Now, the proofs are a little different. We don't deal with those. The board of adjustment deals with those. The other, the other three.
And I, can I just say, I think everybody knows, but, um. Craig, I thi- I don't know that you have introduced yourself, um, but you are a new member to our board and you serve on the zoning board. I don't know if you wanted to say a few other words, but, but that's what I know about you.
Thanks, Beth. Though I'm chair of the zoning board. Uh, now I've been on the board, I think, for like six or seven years. So there's a bit of a review class for me. But, um, yeah, I mean, kind of exactly what Ed's saying here, that. We handle all the other stuff. So.
Yeah, that's great. But I think if anybody did have questions, you know, I'm, I'm offering Craig, uh, to hopefully help respond.
Happy to.
You know, if I can't or Ed can't. So, yeah.
And, uh, uh, the, the other three, uh, quickly are an increase in the permitted floor, uh, area. The, an increase in permitted density, which again, you know, when you think about it, changes the use. And the height of a principal structure that exceeds by 10 feet or 10% the height permitted in the district for that particular, uh, use. So, you know, as you look at those, you can understand that the, they're, they're pretty. Hefty kind of deviations from the zoning ordinance. And, uh, there, the board of adjustment handles it and not the planning board. But the board of adjustment, whose primary jurisdiction are these variances that you see right here. Uh, or any application in and of itself that is just for a variance, for a bulk variance. There's no subdivision or no site plan. However, uh, in granting, uh, in hearing any of these D variances, one through six that you see here. The board of adjustment has ancillary jurisdiction to hear the site plan aspect of that. If there happens to be one, or the subdivision aspect of that, if there happens to be one. Again, the purpose of that was to, uh. Prevent, uh, a, an applicant from being ping ponged, as they say. Between two boards and having to go to two boards. They tried to consolidate the powers in a way that made some sense. Uh, and, and I think over the years, this, this act has been in effect since 1976. So it's, it's getting close to five decades. It's worked pretty well in terms of, um. Streamlining the process, despite the fact that people sometimes think that the process is not that streamlined. You should have seen it before. So that, those are the two, the planning aspects and the subdivision site plan aspects of, are the aspects, uh, the development type aspects. Of the planning board, uh, functions. And that's what, what we'll be seeing most of. And that's what we spend probably most of our time. A couple of other things that I, I want to, uh. Cover, uh, before I turn it back over, over to Graham. Uh, and I, I, I don't want to monopolize the, the time periods, but I want to, want to mention a couple of things. First, there's something called the residential site improvement standards. RSIS, you'll hear that, that acronym utilized, uh, many times. In 1993, the legislature adopted an, an act. To create a residential site improvement standards that would be uniform throughout the entire state. They had created a site improvement advisory board to devise this, um, RSIS. It was, it's ultimately been adopted and those standards actually supersede any site plan improvement standards. Incorporated within the, uh, development regulations. For the most part, I think, and I defer to, to Eileen and Graham, uh, on this, but for the most part, I think our, our ordinances. Conform, uh, to the residential site improvement standards. But you will hear on occasion. Where applicants will say, well, this is inconsistent with the residential site improvement standards. And at the end of the day, they have, um, an absolute right to require that the RSIS standards apply. To their application. That doesn't mean to say they can't agree to do something that we want them to do. But, uh, at the end of the day, as I said, they have the right to, to, um, to demand that.
Yeah, and just to, like, clarify that, like, for, would that be, for example, like, a front yard setback or a side yard? Like, what are the kind of standards that might differ between our ordinance and what the, the RSIS?
Well, it's, they're typically construction-type standards in terms of curbs, roads, road width, depending upon the classification of the road. Pavement thickness, um, curbing.
A little bit more engineering.
They're more, they're more construction-related items, I think. But there's things like, and, and Graham, uh, I'm going to ask him to jump in in a second. Things like parking space sizes, uh, is one that you hear all the time.
Yep.
I think RSIS is nine by 18. And municipal is a lot, 10 by 20, nine by 20, uh, you know, eight by 20 or whatever. Graham, let me pass it back to you because you deal with that more than I.
Yeah, so there's a couple of other things. The other, the other frequent, uh, topic that's, comes up with respect to the RSIS is residential parking standards. So there are residential parking requirements. Some ordinances, uh, do refer to the RSIS requirements. Um, and in those cases, uh, you know, there can be questions as to whether it's technically a variance or not, uh, if it's a deviation from the RSIS standard. So it's important to just be aware of it, um, you know, in, in the proceedings, um, and through our reports, we'll, we'll be sure to advise, uh, you know, as to where things fall and what applies. But it's just important for the board to be cognizant of these additional residential site improvement standards that they exist. They're, they're at the state level, um, and kind of informs the, the local regulations.
And let me also emphasize that, uh, these are residential site improvement standards, RSIS. They're not non-residential site improvement standards. There are no standard site improvement, um, requirements. For non-residential development. Uh, so we need to keep that in mind. We, we see both here in, in Milburn. And, and we generally have, you know, good applicants, good attorneys, good engineers who appear before us. They're familiar with all of this and, uh, you know, it, it, it goes relatively smoothly. They, they understand what they can do and can't do. Uh, and they understand what we can do and can't do. So, uh, they, they keep us on our toes. A cou- couple of other items, conflicts of interest, local government ethics law, uh, there's a general standard. In the municipal land use law, uh, and the general standard is essentially. Members are prohibited, uh, from acting on any matter in which he or she. Either directly or indirectly has any personal or financial interest, uh, in the project. Most of that is, is relatively clear. Uh, it's, it's not ambiguous. There are situations, uh, where some ambiguity is created, uh, because it's not the person himself. Uh, or a member of his immediate family. It may be some other relative, maybe an organization in which the mem- the planning board member is a member. You know, there, there's a lot of nuances with that. There's also something called the local government ethics law, which all of you will, uh. All, all of the, uh, veteran members here know about because every year they have to file a financial disclosure. Form, uh, by April 30th. So that's going to be coming up, by the way. And when you get it, make sure you, you complete it and get it back. And the new members will see that they have to do that as well. Um, I think the date is, is April 30th of this year. And the financial disclosure is not a, is not a numerical disclosure. You don't have to put down, you know, what your income is, uh, but you do have to put down things like. The source of income. So if you work for AT&amp;T, you put down AT&amp;T as a source of income. If you have bank accounts, you put down, you know, Bank of America or TD Bank or whatever it may be. You don't have to put anything else in terms of. You know, what, what those assets are. You have to put, put down real estate that, that you own within the state. And, and all of those things are intended to, uh. Make the board members', uh, interest transparent enough so that the public can look and, uh, determine, uh, you know, whether there's a conflict. That exists based upon, for example, your source of income. Uh, if you work for AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T has an application for you, well, maybe that's something you need to think about. Uh, and AT&amp;T is obviously a much bigger organization and, and there's more attenuation there. But, but I do want to emphasize it's important to get that financial disclosure done. Because DCA has been, uh, pretty aggressive in terms of imposing fines and penalties. Uh, and it's embarrassing and. To you, it's embarrassing to the project. A couple of other things. There's a mandatory education requirement under the municipal land use law for all new members of the board. Except for, uh, the class one member, the mayor, or the mayor's name is me. Or the, uh, council representative, the class three member. All other members, new members, uh, have to take a, a course and pass a course. That is, uh, typically given by the New Jersey planning officials. Uh, Eileen will. Keep track of that and sends out information and so forth. As I said, you have an 18-month period from the date that you're appointed to, to take the course. It's, uh, a four or five-hour course. I've taught them. I don't know if Graham's been involved in that. You know, it's, it's almost like what we're doing here. And then, um, you know, a, a 10-question or 15-question test, multiple choice test is given. And, uh, you know, most of the instructors are, are good and they, they, uh, make sure they emphasize that which is going to be on the test. It, it is just really a, you know, a surface kind of, of, uh, review. And as I said, things like we're doing tonight are typically the kinds of things that you hear at, at these sessions. Two, two other items, and I will be finished. One is. Emails. Uh, and you, you'll see this, um. Most of the time when I send out resolutions or send out anything, uh, to the board members, uh, if I do it myself. I include or try to include, although I'm sure I've been guilty of not including it, a statement that if you were going to respond to me. I sent the resolution out and you have a comment and you're going to put that in an email, do not reply to all. Because electronic communications are considered a meeting, just like. And they're subject to the Open Public Meetings Act to notice, uh, open to the public and so forth. So you can't have this colloquy, uh, or dialogue among planning board members, uh, about any particular matter. And certainly as everyone knows, but I'll emphasize it now, when an application comes up for this board, it is not to be discussed. Anywhere, anytime, except at the meeting itself. You can't discuss it at the supermarket. You can't discuss it with the spouse. You can't discuss it with the applicant. It's the answer, so it wouldn't interest a resident. All of that has to be done in a public forum. At, at the hearing. The, the, the last thing I just want to mention because it's something that, um, people. Are typically unaware of. A planning board is not subject to the portion of the Open Public Meetings Act. That requires that there be a public portion of the meeting. Governing bodies, boards of education and other entities, but not a planning board. Are required for every meeting to have a. are required for every meeting to have a public comment portion. At some way, beginning at the end, sometimes false at the beginning and at the end, governing body will have a public portion where people can come up, make comments about public matters and so forth. A planning board is not required to have such a public comment period. And those of you who have been on the board, you will see, you, you know that we do not have a public portion in Milburn. And when I say public portion, I mean a public comment period. Every hearing on a development application has to have a public comment period for questions and for comments before the decision is made. But other than that, the planning board is not subject to having open to the public session. And that's because, as I pointed out earlier, our role is very circumscribed. We have a planning function. We have a development function. The development function typically involves a public hearing. So the public has an opportunity to participate in what we are doing, which is that reviewing applications. And likewise in the planning function, the primary thing we do, as I said, is the master plan. We cannot adopt the master plan without having a public hearing and prior notice of that public hearing. So again, the public has the opportunity to discuss, comment, recommend, object to a master plan. Matt and Cheryl, or Beth, I guess, for tonight. I'm going to pass it back to you and I'm sure that you'll pass it back to Graham. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Ed. Before I pass it back to Graham, I just wanted to echo one item you said and add to it a little bit, and that was regarding the email distribution. So yes, when you send an email out to the board, thank you for noting, and I guess I'll, I'll, I'll call you before I pass it off. When Ed shares something that comes to us, we, we may not reply all. You know, and if for some reason you can't attend the meeting, something like that, please, you know, contact Eileen and myself. But you, you don't need to notify the full board. That's fine. But not only should you not reply all, you should also not forward that information. You know, it, it, it doesn't go without saying, I will say it. If information is to be made available to the public, it will be posted on the website and Eileen will manage that and handle that. But it's not, it's, I don't know if it's not the power. It's certainly not the responsibility of planning board members to share information about, you know, any reports or any, any information that we are receiving as members of the board are for our use, you know, in that capacity. And and then beyond that, items that are made available to the public, which the application, I believe, Eileen, you put all, all materials have been digital. We've been pretty much doing that throughout the pandemic, if not also a bit before.
Yes, I put everything on the website before the meeting, the applications and any materials.
Great. And then, and that was it. I didn't have any further comments on the, the public comment session. But yeah, Ed, you said it right. We, we have the public, public comment and public questions on applications, but we don't do it typically. Just carte blanche at meetings because we are not required to. Okay, great. Guest on, sorry, you had a.
Nope, actually very similar to what you had asked, but how do we handle if we receive emails or texts from people regarding an application or whatever? Do we delete them? Do we just ignore them, leave them on our phones, leave them in our email? What is the proper protocol?
So I guess there's, there's a couple of different answers to that. I'll give my initial response and they may actually ask Ed to, to weigh in from a legal perspective. It, it did happen. It was the case, for instance, happened to me once that I was given information and sort of told, you know, someone's side of the story, you know, quote unquote, an applicant or, or somebody who was bringing a matter to the board. You know, somebody came in and shared that with me and it was kind of like, I was in the middle of the conversation. I said, wait, wait. Why are you telling me this? You know, and then I became an unobjective participant, right? I was told information that I, that I shouldn't have had. I should only be presented what is discussed in the public session. So I therefore, at that point, recused myself, you know, in discussion with Ed because you don't want the appearance or the, you know, any conflict of interest. So if you're receiving information or texts or emails that are saying, you know, that are outlining points or providing too much and, and you're concerned, I think you should, you know, get our legal advice. If somebody's just saying, oh, what's happening and wanting to know or asking you questions or, I don't know, inserting opinions. I guess you'd have to use your discretion. Certainly you, you could respond so much to say, I'm not allowed to discuss matters if you just want to be polite. I, you know, I don't know the context in which you're, you're being asked or told.
Okay. Yeah, though it's, it's, well, it's, yeah, it's more so, so when you receive the text, the text is there, the email is there. And let's say I don't even read it and I don't want to know about it because I understand that I shouldn't be partial anyway. Do I have to leave it on my phone or can I delete it or is, is that illegal or like, I don't, I don't know what to do with it?
Okay. It's not, it's not illegal to delete it. You can delete it and, and get rid of it. You know, if, if, if it relates to a development application, you see that, you know, which you can, you could usually tell within the first, the first sentence or two, you, you can just stop right there and delete it. It, there would be nothing wrong if you happen to know the person, you know, the sender to, to stop right there and just send something back saying, look, I can't read this email. Come to the meeting and express whatever position you want to express as a, as a courtesy to somebody. You're not required to do that. But, but clearly you shouldn't, you shouldn't read it. You shouldn't read it beyond reading it to realize that I shouldn't be reading this. And as soon as you hit that point, just stop.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we kind of pivot a little bit? So I just want to thank Ed for his very thorough background. It was good foundational information. I'm going to switch gears and we'll start to talk a little bit locally here with respect to, I just want to run through contents of the ordinance and kind of just identify where applicants secretly from within the ordinance. Just kind of guide you and then we'll switch gears into our final portion, which is discussion of good member roles. So in looking at the development regulations and zoning ordinance, we have, you know, these key sections of the, the zoning ordinance and development regulations. So I just wanted to talk through, just identify for folks and just help you kind of understand what's where. It's a big section within the ordinance and it's important to kind of know where you can kind of quickly find things and understand where we're highlighting regulations and where things come from. So the first section is just the intro, the purpose of the section and definitions. This is, you know, basic, your basic overview and how to use the ordinance kind of section. The key component here that is very, very important for folks is the definition section. There's a lot of very, very important definitions. You know, if you're curious, well, how, how is height of a building defined? You know, we're measuring to the peak or measuring to the midpoint of the roof. We know, how are we doing that? Does it include a parapet? Does it not? That's go to definitions. Definitions is always where you can find, you know, what is the, what is the meaning of this word within the context of the ordinance? Let's see what, what they're trying to define here. So that's a very key place to always look for things. Let's moving on, general provisions, this section of the ordinance really talks about general process and procedures where the townships develop and regulations. It's within this section that you have the establishment language regarding the planning board and the zoning board. The planning board establishes the membership roles, membership terms. Same thing for the zoning board and identifies the process by which, you know, applications are handled and, and taken in, distributed to the boards for their, their review. The next section that I think is important for us to kind of just talk through a little bit more here is the design and performance standards. This is really a key section within the ordinance. This is where you're going to find those specific regulations for lighting, curbing, landscaping, shade trees, sidewalks, parking and driveway design standards are here. This section also includes sustainable building and design standards that the ordinance has. This is a very, very key and important section with a lot of relevant information. You know, that is where developers or applicants will first go as they're laying out their project or identifying their site development. This is where they're going to find information as to how things should be configured. What requirements do we have for street trees? What requirements do we have for curb cuts? How wide should the sidewalk be? All these types of things are going to be here within the design and performance standards. And it's important to note that in reviewing applications to the board, you know, as the board deliberates and reviews things, the applicants can seek relief from compliance with these standards. And because these are not within the zoning code, these are what we call design waivers or waiver from the site plan standard. So the threshold is lower. It's not as strict of a review criteria as there is for a variance. But you know, the applicant can seek a deviation from the strict, you know, requirement within these design standards. So that's important to note there.
And we get a lot of these, right? We get a number of these.
Yes, there's typically a number of deviation requests from design standards. The next key section, this is really kind of the bread and butter of, you know, how, how development is regulated within the township is the zoning provision section. Here's where you're going to find first, you know, your use regulations by zone. What are you the permitted principal conditional, which we had talked about and accessory uses within each of the zone districts? That's outlined here in this section of the ordinance. Then what are the bulk regulations with each, in each of those zones? What are the front yard setback requirements, side yard, rear yard, coverage requirements? All of those things are within this section. Also within the zoning provisions are the off-street parking and loading requirements. This is where you're going to find required number of parking spaces, number of loading spaces. All that information is within here. And then there's a huge series of supplementary regulations, what other, you know, regulate use regulations exist within the ordinance that, that are all contained within this section. And it's important to note that within this section of the ordinance, this is where applicants seek variance relief from this specific zoning section. So if an applicant is looking to deviate from any of these requirements within this, you know, DRZ six section, that would be a variance relief request. And as Ed alluded to before, there are two flavors of variance relief. There's the D variances, which we discussed at length, which the Board of Adjustment has jurisdiction to grant deviation from. And then the C variances and applicants can seek C variance relief under two different criteria. Either C one, demonstrating a hardship or difficulty in meeting the requirement or C two, where the benefits of deviation outweigh any detriment of the deviation. Whereby, you know, having a greater setback, having a smaller setback is an, is an advantage or a benefit to the application. And the applicant would have to provide criteria justifying the deviation in that format. So DRZ six is really, really a key section that the board members should be familiar with and just understand, you know, what lives within this section. Then the flood damage prevention section of the DRZ is important. It contains specific requirements for development within flood prone areas. This is a, a key section that's required for the community to maintain. You know, it's, it's standard with respect to flood regulations and ensure that properties are protected within the township, particularly in flood thrown areas. There's also some other, you know, federal community rating system programs that require flood damage ordinances. And the township does have one adopted. DRZ eight is another very, very important section. And I know this has some recent history with some review for historic landmarks here before this board at the end of last year. The historic preservation section here within the DRZ establishes the historic preservation commission, which is, you know, another, I like to call a land use board as well. They do have land use authority. They have the ability to nominate historic landmarks and historic districts within the township. Nomination recommendations are advanced to the township committee, which then by ordinance refers that back down here to the planning board for an ordinance review following the, you know, recommendation and hearing adoption, then those properties can become local landmarks within the township. Once a local landmark property, historic properties are subject to a certificate of appropriateness review, meaning certain exterior publicly visible modifications to those structures require issuance of a certificate of appropriateness from the commission to make those changes to the building. So it's important to, to understand, for the board to understand the role of HPC and that they do have a review process set forth for certain exterior modifications. Again, though, it's important to, you know, as Ed alluded to before, you know, we don't, the municipal land use law does not like to ping pong between boards. So, you know, any historic properties that are historic landmarks that should be subject to a development application would come to either the planning board or zoning board and not, not required to see the certificate of appropriateness from the HPC. There is a, an advisory review process that can be satisfied through that, that requirement. So.
And Graham, I just add, this was something that was before the board in the 2021 year. So, and I don't, I'm not up to date on what the HPC is, is looking to do for 2022, but we may have items, we may or may not have items come before us for review of, if they're going for a historic landmark designation.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So, and just as part of our work as township planner, you know, we're going to start looking to assist and help out with the HPC a little bit. I'll be attending their, their meeting in February to kind of see where things are and identify, you know, opportunities to, to bring them into the fold with planning activities and exercises. So looking forward to assisting them as well.
And maybe as a, sorry, just to, to finish that thought, um, maybe as a follow-up, you know, we could ask whether it's you or the appropriate liaison, maybe let's think about it and I can reach out to the, to the TC too. But I believe there's a TC liaison to the HPC. I don't know who that is for this calendar year, Maggie or Diane Dino?
Me.
Oh, great. So we're lucky. Um, so if there is something that you do feel is, is like worth a, a share or just a heads up or notification to the planning board, you know, maybe we can work with Graham through that and, and just talk through whether it's, you know, an informal type subcommittee report or something. I think it's always good just to, the more our boards can be, you know, interconnected and know what's going on, it would help us.
I think that's very important. Thank you, Beth. Perfect.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very important to, to make sure that all the boards kind of understand their roles and each has a very, very key responsibility within the town. And then the final section that I just wanted to highlight, this is just kind of within the, the development regulation zoning ordinance is the wellhead protection regulation section, which really is designed to regulate development that may impact wellhead areas of water supply. So that kind of rounds out the contents of the development regulations and owning ordinance. I wanted to pause and see if there are any questions about content, you know, really the key sections, as I talked about earlier, five and six, the design standards and performance standards in the zoning provisions that folks should really, really try and be aware of. And everything is online in the ecosystem. It's pretty easy to navigate and it is searchable by text. So if you ever have a question or looking for a term, it's easy to kind of search and Google within the, the, the code as well. Okay. Does anyone have any questions as respect to that section? Okay. Oh, yes, Mark, Mr. Matt.
Hi, I, I just had a couple of questions. Can you, can you go back to the design and performance standards, right? Curbing landscaping. Okay. So I just really briefly, are these updated often, frequently as needed?
You know, I mean, updates to this section is, is, it's an ordinance change to the TC. So, you know, if there's any modifications or tweaks or amendments to this section, that, that would be the process through that, through which that would go. You know, as far as frequency goes, you know, I can't speak to frequency of that, but that is something that can be fairly easily amended, you know, as long as it's consistent with the master plan recommendations and what's, you know, put forth within the master plan as far as recommending, recommendations for, you know, these types of design standards.
I just want to clarify. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
You can clarify. I'll wait.
I was going to say, I wanted to understand if you meant, are they holistically reviewed or do they get updated? Because like, for example, we received the, the loading zones, which I would say is sort of within this, a design standard type. I don't know. I don't, I don't know if this is where.
Yeah. So actually, if I could, the loading zone requirement is actually a zoning requirement. I have loading, off-street parking and loading.
But I feel that we do sometimes receive individual ordinances that maybe would fit in that. But Mark, I don't know if your question was more, are these as a whole looked at and reviewed?
Yeah. I mean, I'm just keeping it up to date with time, like for instance, on the landscaping tree, you know, continuum, we've got a whole suite of invasive pest species, you know, everything from an Asian longhorn beetle to the eastern lantern fly. And we quite often get design plans with a list species that should be off, they should not be on this list. And they say, oh, the forester will take care of that. I don't know how current Milburn's, you know, tree species are. I know the state's constantly revising it and it's only because they, you know, they appointed an outstanding forester pretty recently and, you know, they've, they're taking a new and fresh look. And, and also related to sustainable building and design standards, we're constantly given in, in flood zones or areas that we know. i- in flood zones or areas that we know receive a tremendous amount of um stormwater. Um, you know, design plans that like a quasi antidiluvian, they could date back not as visionary as Roman handling of stormwater, but dating back they hundreds of years and they they're certainly not updated. I think since I've been on the board, there's been one presentation where they, you know, came up with a rain garden. And when we suggested to another firm, they give the same kind of pillbox non-door techniques, but just sort of a concrete bunker, you know, that doesn't really handle stormwater that well. Especially if it's connected to a pipe that sends it off into a a creek and we've gotten several of those. So I was just wondering if they are updated or we can request that it's like twenty-first century engineering as opposed to obsolete engineering.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think what's, this kind of does circle back nicely to the beginning of our conversation and talking about the the master plan and kind of the subcommittee to review. Uh, you know, I think you'll find that um a lot of the recommendations contained within the uh master plan reexamine, the master plan, uh, you know, will impact design standards and these types of standards within this section. So and it's important that, you know, any contemplated ordinance amendment or change to these sections be founded on some kind of plan document that's you know, recommends that this action be taken. Um, so that's why I think it's important to, you know, leverage the master plan recommendations uh to, you know, effectuate those changes uh throughout the ordinance, including these design standard sections. So um, you know, I think as the subcommittee starts to move forward in that process, you know, just that we've you know, been looking at, you know, for our scope of work for the balance of this year, you know, where we can make some of these edits, particularly short and medium term uh updates and recommendations, you know, I think we'll find that some of those do cross pollinate with the design standard recommendations.
Yeah, I I'd say a lot of them. You're right. Thank you.
Sure.
And Graham, just to clarify, when you say we, you mean topology, like they're in their responsibility to the town?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Oh, I thought it was in reference to a subcommittee.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, I, you know, I kind of envisioned us assisting this, you know, our wo- our our work will be coordinated. So yeah, I think that some of what the work that we'll be doing, we may work through the subcommittee, you know, we'll have to see how that that format shakes out. So.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Okay, were there any other questions with respect to the code sections uh before I shift gears and kind of go into some of our recommended uh recommendations for board members? Okay. All right. Okay, um, so uh I've given this, as I mentioned at the top, I've given this presentation before and I've uh I uh, one of the, one of the trainings or that I had, um, there were these ten, um, ten behaviors to avoid as a board member, and I didn't like the way that it was phrased. So, um, you know, I I've I've reworked this slide and presented this before, and I think it's I think it's better to be positive and be affirmative, you know, as to how, um, you know, planning board members can be good contributing members, um, make sure that they're conducting themselves in a way that benefits the board, benefits the township and benefits the public uh in its review process. Um, so I just kind of wanted to run through these kind of ten recommendations that we put together. Um, and thanks to both Ed and Beth for kind of giving the initial screen on these to make sure it was meeting where we needed to go. Um, so the first one is, um, in order to be a good uh planning board member is, uh, the first is to actively participate. Um, and that includes in in this virtual environment, making sure that your camera is on, that you're not, you know, multitasking, you're really focusing your attention um, participating within the meeting. Um, that way, you know, you want to demonstrate both to the applicant that you're engaged and to the public that you're engaged, um, and that you're there participating in the meeting. Um, the second is to always make sure you prepare for the meeting, um, that, you know, th- this is a a really big job that you all have. I mean, it's great that you're volunteering your time and service. Um, and, you know, things can go much more efficiently and smoothly if everybody is read, uh, has reviewed the plans, you know, knows the content of what the application applicant is seeking. Um, and is prepared to to kind of review the application. Um, it can help to kind of, you know, know what questions you may want to ask, know where you may need some more information and kind of have a heads up as to where things may need to go, um, for you to to feel comfortable uh and evaluating the application before you. Um, the third is to always acknowledge the public. I know that's also hard in this virtual format because we don't typically see the public, but um, know that the public is here and that they're listening and um that they are, you know, probably formulating questions themselves. Um, and, you know, as a member of this this board, you're kind of representing them a little bit. So, uh, you want to help make sure that any concerns that they may have are 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 heard and kind of use your questioning to help address what other members of the public may be thinking about or have concerns about. Uh, the fourth point here is, um, to ask the applicant for information. Uh, answers to what you're looking for in evaluating an application are going to come from the applicant. They're the one that has, you know, reviewed the site, contemplated the plan, developed the idea for what they want to do. Um, you know, selected, you know, bricks, materials, thought about, you know, how they they're envisioning this to happen and play out. Um, so they have the information, ask them for the information. Uh, the more information that comes out into the public, uh, the better the decision-making process can be. Um, the fifth one, which kind of circles back to Ed's uh comments about conflicts or, you know, anything, you know, emails or correspondence that that folks have been privy to is just advise of any conflicts. If you feel that you may be conflicted, um, you know, reach out to Ed and make sure you talk through the issues. Um, and then, you know, it's better to be cautious um, than it is to to, you know, refrain or keep keep any potential conflicts hidden. Um, always, always use Ed as a great resource. He can help you and advise you as to, you know, whether you're able to participate uh fully and uh independently. Um, six is to really focus your attention on the applicant and on the application before you. Um, you know, the applicant, as I said, and their representatives, they're the ones with the information to help you make the decision. So you want to focus your time and energy uh to listen to them and hear what they're saying, um, and kind of keep those notes, uh, you know, that you're that you may have uh to evaluate the application and make sure that you can make an effective decision. Um, the seventh point that I have here is, um, use facts presented to evaluate decision. So um, the facts that are presented by the applicant during the proceedings are what you need to base your decision on. Um, you know, you can't necessarily use anecdotal information that you know about or something else that wasn't discussed openly within the room to make a decision. Um, you have to make sure that the decision-making that you're undertaking and that you're evaluating is based on the facts that were presented. Um, you know, you you have to, and 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 really, this kind of goes back to to prior comments that we had, you know. Um, if, you know, the applicant says they're going to do something and, you know, y- you don't necessarily trust them. I don't know if you can really, you know, waiver on your decision-making. I mean, the applicant is bound by the representations that they make during the proceedings, uh, that is within the resolution document. Um, so it's important to base it on the facts that you've heard. Um, the applicant will be bound legally by the by the resolution document. Um. Focus your questioning on the application. Um, so, you know, it's, you want to make sure that the questions that you're asking, the line of question that you're asking is specific to the application. Um, there may be times where, you know, you may need to get some related information, but make sure that it's really focusing on the application. Um, you know, there, for example, uh, you know, you may have a project before you and there may be some concerns about what's happening on a neighboring property. You know, you don't want your questioning to then start focusing on this neighboring property that you may have concerns about. That the applicant isn't, they're not responsible for knowing that information. They're not responsible for sharing that with you. Um, you know, so focus on the application and and instead ask your questioning that may help you understand that relationship. Um, if you're concerned about an adjacent use to an existing application, ask about the screening, ask about, you know, its relationship to adjacent uses, those kinds of things. Focus on the application at hand so that you target your decision-making. Um, the ninth point uh is is really, really important. Um, this happens a lot is you want to make sure that you're responding to the design that you're presented with and uh refrain from spending time redesigning an application's project. Um, in this case, I think it's important to really focus your questioning to understand the applicant's decision-making to come to up with their design. Um, rather than uh a line of questioning to try and impose changes or force them to kind of contemplate making a change. Um, so, for example, if you can ask, well, why did you, why did you decide to do that or what, you know, did you consider, um you know, you want to focus that questioning so that it focuses on their thought process to get to the end result rather than kind of contemplating or spinning things off into a different design realm that they may not um have even thought about or considered. Um, and then the last point I just wanted to make is that, um, just to make sure that you're using supportive language for your your decision-making and avoid the use of any personal opinion on that matter. Um, so, for example, um, you know, when there's summary comments prior to um a vote or an action taken by the board, make sure that um you're using language that's supportive of your decision-making. So, um, you know, I things, saying things like, um, you know, I think that the applicant is seeking relief uh from the side yard setback that is just too great, uh, and, you know, will will have a negative impact on adjacent properties in the area rather than saying something to the effect of, well, that building is just going to be too close. I wouldn't feel comfortable if I lived next door. That's not the right way to say it. Want to make sure that you're basing your language on, um, you know, the ordinance and speaking to what the uh uh, what the intent of the ordinance is. Um, so those are just some kind of key um things to think about, um, as you're a board member and just kind of ways to interact and kind of do your, conduct yourselves in your line of questioning to make sure that, um, you know, you're, we're, we have a a fair and open process for everybody to kind of understand the decision-making um, and kind of make sure that the applicants are, you know, putting the information out there that's best for the board to make their decision. So I hope that was a little bit helpful. Happy to answer any questions or, you know, respond in any way that anybody has any thoughts.
That sounds good. Um, thank you, uh, Gus. And I think you're a new hand raised, Mark. I'm not sure about you. So let's start with Gus then.
Yep, so, uh, one, one clarification, I think I may have said to remain or not remain impartial to, uh, I meant before to remain impartial about the emails. We want to remain impartial, so I don't want to read any of the emails or the texts. Paul did, if I misspoke. Uh, but but my question is, uh, for the RSIS, um, when we're dealing with the apartment or the buildings where we have commercial or in the business districts, I guess. Um, do those apply there or is that only for our real residential uh zones?
Um, Ed, do you want to take that or do you want me to?
Well, you could start. I'll I'll uh supplement whatever you want to say and
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, you know, it's, mixed use projects are are a little bit complicated in that, you know, there are mixing uses. Um, you know, I think typically, you know, the RSIS will have a role. It's kind of a mixed format, if if it's best if I can say this. So, for example, the RSIS requirements for parking will apply for residential uses. However, given that the site is largely non-residential, you know, for first floor or other uses on the site, um, you know, local ordinance requirements for design standards for parking and other things will also apply. So i- it's kind of a mixed format, uh, in that, you know, we kind of evaluate both. Um, you know, but I think with respect to, as we, as we alluded to, driveways and parking and parking lots and parking spaces, um, you know, would be more in line with the uh non-residential side of things and what's within the ordinance code. Um, but there may be instances where a couple of things do relate specifically to the RSIS, particularly the off-street number of spaces for residential uses.
And and I I I agree with with what Graham said. Um I I I also think, uh, it depends upon the uh uh, the ratio, for lack of a better word, between, you know, residential and non-residential. So if it's largely a residential project and you have, you know, a small amount of ground floor, non-residential, uh, while I think Graham is absolutely correct with regard to calculating parking spaces, you use two different standards in terms of numbers. But things like, um, uh, that that would otherwise be controlled under the RSIS if it were a hundred percent residential project. I suspect that would probably govern because the, you know, the project is largely a residential project and the reverse, I think, would would apply uh, uh, if if the ratios were reversed, so to speak, you know, it was, it was largely a a non-residential project with some kind of, you know, um, apartment on top, so to speak, and and we've seen some of that. Uh, so, uh, I I I, it it does get to be a a more, uh, uh, subjective kind of, uh, decision-making process. I don't think there's any hard and fast rules that I'm aware of, either in the RSIS or even on our ordinances that deal with that. And I I don't remember any cases in which that issue has been uh, addressed, although, you know, there certainly may be some out there. Uh, one, one thing before I forget, uh, and I don't want to cut off the questions of the board members, but item number five, uh, I had mentioned the local government ethics law and municipal land use law about conflicts. Graham raised it here about advising many conflicts and and one of the things that I emphasize in any discussion that I have with regard to uh, conflicts and local ethics, ethics law and so forth is, please, if you think that there may be a conflict, contact me, but don't contact me three minutes before the meeting. Uh, and and, you know, we don't really have that in the virtual setting, but I I've been in situations over my career where I'm I'm at a meeting and an application has started and some member slips me a note and says, I think I have a conflict or do I have a conflict here? And it's like, yeah, you know, how do I, how do I deal with that? And some of these conflict issues are not, you know, are not black and white in the vernacular. They're 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 nuanced and there's questions that I need to ask, this information I need to gather. Um, and and, uh, you know, I just can't do that in two minutes before a meeting or certainly during a meeting. So uh, you know, and and this board, I have had situations, the chair referred to one uh, in which she and I had a discussion uh in a matter, and I've had discussions with other board members. Uh, you know, who have called and I've got the information, I've given the advice, and then they relate that at the meeting. Uh, so that they can move forward. So please, if you think you have a conflict, uh, let me know as early as possible. Thanks.
If I could just, um, uh, just, we're picking up on num- number one of your keys to being a good member, camera on. Um, just from my perspective, because we are virtual, if if you turn your video off, i- it's in essence, you've left the room. So if we're in the middle of an application and you turn your video off, well, now I don't know, did you hear the whole application? Can you vote on the matter? So it does create some problems um, in that respect as well. So I just really ask that, you know, if you have to turn your video off, you have to do something, just like if you were at the meeting, hey, you know, can I have five minutes? I need to take care of something. Um, or at least just let us know so that I know, you know, who's eligible.
Um, so that was largely what we had prepared for this evening. We didn't, we got it right in under, under the nine o'clock time. So um, yeah, happy to, you know, if there's any follow-up questions or anybody has any further things, um, you know, thoughts that they want to discuss beyond uh what we presented this evening, we can certainly do that. Um, you know, happy to share more information or, you know, examples and experiences and highlight other other components of their review process as well. Um, but, you know, happy to, happy to help. Uh, you feel free to reach out to Ed and I and we can, you know, certainly assist in anything and and think about this again in the future. So Beth, I'll I'll turn it back over to you. So.
Great, thank you. I had to relocate because my internet was also, uh, tweaking out on me. Um, but first of all, thank you, um, to our professionals. Thank you to the members who participated. Um, Mark, I will let you ask a question, but I just want to, um, before I conclude or we, we, you know, send ourselves off, um, you know, kind of back to where I started, this, this isn't like a one and done. Um, I think there are more items that could come up that we would benefit from having discussion on. Um, hopefully, this is somewhat beneficial, a bit of a, an intro overview. Um, many of you have knew probably some, if not most of the items tonight, but hopefully you heard something that was new. Um, one item that I, we didn't discuss and perhaps we could more, or I just want to raise, um, just to put this, this sort of concept in your, in your minds and maybe we can marinate on it, um, is the difference between zoning and enforcement um, and where the role of the planning board is or or isn't with those. Um, a number of applications, for instance, come up and actually, Mark, you raised something, you know, talking about trees and species. Um, and, you know, yes, it's our responsibility to review the plans and the applications. Um, and then you mentioned almost in a, almost in a voice of frustration of, but then we say the forester will handle it. Um, but that is the forester's job in terms of enforcement. So if there's other things we could be doing to set ourselves up for success, we absolutely should should look a- and look to that and make sure we, you know, have our plan in place such that we're giving good recommendations. Um, we often get questions of, well, how many business parking permits and are we requiring it? And did the previous applicant do it? You know, that points to some of Graham's um, items which are ask about the current application in front of you, not the previous use of the restaurant or whatever it was. Um, a- and whose job is that to make sure business permits were purchased? That's enforcement. That's not the planning board. So um, just this idea, and I think it comes up in a lot of different uh, you know, ways that we talk about, you know, how are we going to make sure that the the house is built to the height that they specified and that, you know, they they, you know, we decline them a variance for whatever the height was, but how do we know that they didn't just go and build it? Again, that's maybe not the responsibility of the planning board, but is the responsibility of somebody else in the township. So, um, I'm not trying to drop a bomb and then say, okay, now we're not going to talk anymore. Um, other things that I think we do want to follow up on, obviously, the subcommittee um, idea, and I think, you know, we certainly have heard, um, you know, Mark raising his hand uh, in interest in volunteering to serve on in interest in volunteering to serve on, I guess you would be looking at it. I don't know how you want to characterize it or name it, but I certainly want to make sure, you know, you have you feel that you have an assignment and a purview. So it's not just like, we'll review everything and make recommendations, you know, that that's, I think, too broad. And we want to give you as a subcommittee a tangible task. So let's follow up on that, Mark. And then we can also put out, you know, Eileen can send out a request and people can respond to her individually if they'd like to be considered to be on that, to serve on that subcommittee. Mark, you did have your hand up. I want to offer you a chance to speak up.
Yeah, thanks so much, Beth. I thought that you know, Graham, the provisos, the rules and regs or the recommendations and how to conduct oneself oneself was terrific. And I think it would behoove us to perhaps send them out to the to the applicants. I mean, and I can think of a couple of applicants that were outrageous, where they denigrated the public, they denigrated planning board members, they refused to answer questions, they were rude and and the way they handled themselves. I don't believe they were adequately policed. And I think it really helps to maybe remind them of if we get a suite of the same cast of characters that they must have acknowledged the public and they can't say, I answered that question three meetings ago. I mean, you know, especially that our meetings go on quite late. More often than not, on, you know, comprehensive plans. And the second one is if we ask the applicant for more information or and it could relate to enhance dorm water management, it could relate to additional screening. And the applicant says, we'll either get back to you or they don't have an answer at this point. Who's responsible for the follow-up? Because as far as I can tell, I've never to any of my questions or to many of my questions that were unanswered, I never got a response from, you know, from either the applicant or the staff person who, you know, might be responsible, I don't know if they are, for getting that information from the applicant.
Great. And I know you had you had posed that question. Ed, I think I had passed it on to you and you had some thoughts. Both regarding like what we're legally sort of allowed to request and that has to do with how we develop the resolution. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you. I think there's a, there's a couple of things that we need to to be clear about. If during the course of an application, that is a continuing application, you know, an applicant says in response to a recommendation for a board member or the board or a request for additional information, I'll get back to you. I think that it's it's probably our job. And when I say our job, I guess it's the board's job, it's the professional's job and the staff's job to to follow up on that. And I think I think you're right. We don't necessarily have that protocol down. Somehow that stuff gets lost. Sometimes, you know, if it's a significant item, it's not, it naturally comes up and they'll come back and say, you know, we addressed this or we have this or we have that. But a lot of times, I think you're right, there are less significant, but yet important items that that do fall by the wayside. I think that's something, you know, we we all should be a little bit more vigilant about. That said, if we have an application and at the end of the application, we start talking about, well, you know, the applicant should consider X, applicant should consider Y. Y being the letter, obviously. Those are things that I try not to put in the resolution because they're somewhat meaningless. You know, when we say, if we put in a condition, the applicant shall consider, you know, using a different species of of ground cover or something like that. It's it's a feel-good kind of condition. And I try and I don't pretend that I'm always successful in doing this. But I do try to remind the board when that kind of thing happens that we really can't put a condition in like that because it doesn't mean anything. We either have to, you know, get that nailed down before time or impose a condition, you know, the applicant shall not utilize X ground cover and shall utilize Y ground cover or shall utilize ground cover that's acceptable to the forester, the engineer, the planner or somebody. And and I try to do that in resolutions. As I said, I I'm sure I'm not successful all the time. But I think those are the kinds of things that I would ask the board when you see my resolutions and you get a chance to review them. I try to get them to you in advance of the meeting a few days. Sometimes I'm not successful in that either. But but, you know, take a look at them and don't be afraid to to raise the issues like that. If you see something in there that, you know, makes you scratch your head as to how we're going to deal with it. Bring it to my attention, bring it to the board's attention and we can we can modify anything before we adopt it. That's all I have to add to that. I know I know that Mark had raised another issue regarding abstentions. And and I want to, I want to address that because I want to address it in a broader context, not in any particular application. It's pretty clear from what we've said, I think Graham and I about conflicts, that if there is a conflict and we determine that there is, then an applicant has to, a board member has to abstain from participation in the matter. And people professionals have different views on that as to what what that means in terms of, you know, when you're in an in-person meeting, do you leave the dais? Do you sit at the dais but not say anything? And and that's that's sort of a judgment call that's made at the time that, you know, we do this. Obviously, the the cleanest way is to, you know, leave the dais, leave the room, not have anything to do with anything. In this kind of setting, probably the same thing applies, you know, and and to Eileen's point. If you're here and we have another application, but you have a conflict in the first one. You know, you turn off your video. This way you can't make faces at anybody or influence anybody in terms of the discussion. And you are not there, as I leaned alluded to earlier, you know, if your screen's off for purposes of the hearing, you are not there. You certainly have no conflict in listening to what's going on. So in that case, there has to be an abstention period. There's just no discussion. In general, under the municipal land use law, you need a quorum in order to hold a meeting. And then you need a vote of a majority of those members present to take action at a meeting. That's the general for. The issue of people during, leave aside the conflict issue, assume there's no conflicts at all and you have a full board of nine members present. The issue of abstentions and how abstentions are dealt with is a very thorny, thorny legal issue. And there's, there's a number of different interpretations. Unfortunately, the interpretations come in a context that is in planning board matters, they come in governing body matters and there's a variety of different rules that that apply. Generally speaking, members should exercise the the powers that they have. They have a responsibility to be planning board members and maybe I'm struggling because I don't want to misstate anything and I don't want to give anyone the wrong impression here. I think that that you need to have a legitimate basis for an abstention and and leaving again, aside the conflict, assume there's no conflict. There are some matters where, and it may be unusual, but it's important. Where a member just might feel either because of the manner in which the application was presented. Some of the things that Mark alluded to and we've all seen in various applications by various applicants or professionals representing applicants. The level of objectivity begins to be attenuated because you are just so you're reacting emotionally. You need to really put that aside. But if you find yourself in a situation where you simply cannot put that aside and and you're basing your decision not on, as Graham said, facts that have been presented and information that has been presented. The zoning ordinances that we have and so forth and you feel inside, you know, that that you are not able to judge this application objectively, you need to abstain. And and the advice that we always give as municipal attorneys is that if a member is uncomfortable in voting, for whatever reason it makes them uncomfortable, then the better way to proceed is to abstain. Now, you know, that that's, it's a very delicate issue. You know, members have different views on things. We don't necessarily know. Not we don't necessarily, we don't know unless a member discloses something. You know, what it is that that is triggering that issue of abstention and and I think we have to rely upon the integrity of the board member to know that they have an obligation to fulfill as board members. But they also have, they have to exercise that that ability, that right objectively. And if they can't do that, then their their decision has to be to abstain. The last thing I want to say about that is that is that there's no power of this board to compel any member to vote on an application. That is not within the purview of powers of the municipal land use law or planning board members and the zoning board of adjustment members. Some attorneys may differ on that, you know, in terms of determining whether somebody's in conflict or not. I do not subscribe to that view. There's nothing in the land use law that gives the planning board the power to make determinations as to whether some member is in conflict with something or whether a member should abstain or whether a member should vote. That that is up to the individual members and we have to rely upon you know, the, as I said earlier, the integrity of the member to undertake the responsibilities that they have and and the uphold the oath that they've sworn to in terms of fulfilling their duties. Thanks, Beth.
Ed, could I just ask you real quick on that on that matter? So if we have a member that knows off the bat, you know, I have a conflict, I'm recusing from this matter. Okay, well, we have alternates, I can take a vote from that. But if we sit through an entire application and when I come to a vote, I have a member who says I'm going to abstain, that's their vote. I can't go to the alternate and take a vote in their place, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just to make sure.
What happens if five abstain?
Well, if you have, if you're, if you have a full board, let's let's leave the alternates out for a moment. So none of the alternates are here. You have a full board. Nine members there. Five members abstain. There, there's no quorum, you know, you don't have a quorum because you only have four members who can vote on the application. So in that case, the action would not be taken.
But, right, you mean, you don't mean like recuse, you mean if you get all the way through an application and now it's time to vote at the end? And five people say, yeah, I'm abstaining, I don't feel comfortable voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get the facts.
I don't know. Is that what Gaston meant or no?
Well, yes.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Yep.
Okay, in that case, the action would be taken. In other words, you have, you've heard the application, nine members have heard the application. So you you have a quorum present at the meeting. All you need is a majority of those voting. An absent, an absent, an abstention is not a no vote. An abstention is no vote, not not a no vote. An abstention is no vote. Okay, it's not a vote. It's not a yes vote. It's not a no vote. It's a non-vote. So in that case, you'd have four members who would who would vote yes. And you'd be able to, the the action would be taken, in my view.
And Ed, if you had like two that said yes, two that said no, and five that abstained, it wouldn't pass?
No, it would, it would be denied in that case because if you don't have, if you have a majority, then the action is not taking. If you had a three-two vote, I think it would pass.
Okay. So yeah, so your point is while we can't compel or force anybody to to vote, if if you have deemed yourself, you know, prior to the beginning of the application as not conflicted out of hearing it, that you're saying, yes, our responsibility is to be here to hear them out and to and to make a vote on it, to make a determination. But should something come up for whatever reason that is and a person chooses to abstain, there's no recourse. There's no, there's, the person should feel able to abstain if 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 that is where their sort of gut or heart is at.
Yes.
Understood. Diane?
If that were to happen, I would think that'd be pretty unusual that five people would do that. It would happen. Would the applicant have recourse in a court and saying this was not fair or appropriate? And we went through hours of presentation, we paid our experts and we had five people who had a responsibility to vote. In essence, bail. They didn't want to be on the record voting, which, you know, would really be, I think, abhorrent. But what if that happened? What is the applicant's recourse?
Well, I think, I think if if the board voted, if the four members voted in favor of the application, as I said earlier, I think that 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 would carry. Because you have nine members there. But a, an abstention is considered a, is considered a, not a vote, I guess, again, it's hard to, I don't want to say.
We understand.
So you'd have, you'd have a four zero four vote. The four is not a no, the four abstentions are not no's. So you have a four zero vote, which would carry the application. So.
How about on a D variant, Ed? I mean, you couldn't do a four, you couldn't do a four zero vote on a D variant.
No, no, not a D variants. That's a different, we don't do D variants. You're right.
No. Ed, what I'm saying is, four people are left to vote, two vote yes, two vote no, the application doesn't carry. Would the applicant say, wait a minute, this is like a farce. How could this isn't, this is not right? It wouldn't be right. Would they then have recourse in court of law?
Well, I think, I think they may take that action. But again, I'm not sure that a judge can inquire as to the basis for the abstention. Because as I said, the advice that we always give and as municipal attorneys, you know, I've given this for decades and I'm not alone in it. Is that when you're talking about conflicts of interest, if the member, the individual member is of the view that they cannot hear or vote on this matter objectively, that they cannot do that. Or that they have a conflict for some reason that I may not think is a conflict under the law. They have a right to abstain. And I don't think, I don't think a judge has a right. I'm not saying, I don't think a judge has a right to to order that a member of a planning board voter an application when they feel that they cannot judge this application objectively, for whatever reason.
Perhaps an answer to Diane's question is whether an applicant can appeal to somebody else, to the state or otherwise, if they feel that the board didn't make make an accurate decision. So there is an appeals opportunity.
There is. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And so that would be for another time to determine.
Usually the litigation is the reverse where where an applicant is not trying to get a board member to vote, but an applicant determines that that a member had a conflict and should not have voted in the application. That's that's typically the cases you see. I'm not sure I've ever seen a case where the reverse is true, where where some, some lawsuit has been brought to compel a member to vote who has determined that there's a conflict or that they just can't judge an application objectively.
Yeah. I want to give Mark a chance to ask it before we.
Yeah, Ed, I would just ask a question. I in one instance, that, you know, we we heard four, maybe five months of hearing and testimony and we had three members that that abstained from a, what I considered probably the most, you know, abhorrently run and conflicted case I've ever been, you know, a part of or applicant. Would you, what would you say about a member that is voting, is abstaining for, for not non-conflict, but is abstaining for, for, not non-conflict, but as a protest vote? And I'm not saying that any of the members voted at a protest, but after, you know, listening to witnesses for five months, I, I would, I, I would never rule out anything, but they, you know, the fact that there might be a conflict of interest is a little more, you know, doubtful than for some other reason.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to comment on any, any application that's been before the board. I'm going to refrain from answering that question.
But how about if it was generic? Is it, have you seen instances where applicant, where, where board members have voted for conflict, excuse me, have abstained for, you know, as a vote of protest?
I'm not sure that I've ever seen it. Well, two things, number one, you know, if, if a board member does not articulate the basis for their abstention, you know, sometimes board members do that, other times they don't. I don't know why they abstain, you know, they don't, if they don't put it on the record, which they're not required to do, I don't know where they, I don't know the reason they abstain, so I, I guess I can't answer the question because, you know, unless they say, and I, I've never had the situation where they've said, I'm not, I'm going to abstain because I'm protesting, you know, I, I don't want to vote on this application because I'm protesting. I've never had that kind of situation. If, if a member does not articulate the basis for their, for their abstention, you know, I, I don't know what it is, and I, and I don't need to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think just in general, I've been doing this for a long time. And it's, it's typically not an issue, I mean, I can count on the fingers of one hand, I think, over almost fifty years of doing this, where those kinds of issues have come up. And, and, you know, I have to tell you, they're, A, they're unusual, and B, they're just thorny, thorny legal issues. And, and as I said earlier, the law is, is not clear depending upon whether you're talking about planning boards, whether you're talking about governing bodies, and depending upon what panel of judges you happen to get, you know, who look at this.
Yeah. Well, we are unique, and maybe we are among the fingers on your hand, or maybe we're not, you don't get to answer, you don't have to answer. But we thank you. Thank you, you know, Ed, for serving us for many years, Graham for jumping in and, you know, bringing a fresh perspective, but, but one with, you know, a great basis of, of understanding what's going on in surrounding communities and stepping up and helping us continue to make our planning process even better, I think. So we're lucky, I'm looking forward to 2022 with everybody, virtual or not, the whole year, so thank you. I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, and while Maggie, you'll second it.
I'll second.
Thank you. So all in favor? We will close, good night, thank you, and to be continued, I think.
Good night.
Night.